I don't have a good weather app.
What does that clock on the wall say? Start with your pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start right out with clerk items, regular board meeting minutes, February twentieth. Any questions, comments, or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve. A second.
All in favor? Thank you, Anita. Item B, request for proposal, water quality improvement project.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, and item C is hazmat incident command, New York State Fire Class three sixteen to twenty-three and twenty-four at Sarnac Lake. I assume that's for Justin, is it anyone else going, or is it just anyone as far as department?
Well, to that point, Art, do we, do we want to put it out there that maybe somebody else should go to, just in case we have redundancy? In case, you know, poor Justin gets hit by a bus?
Sure. Any, anyone they feel is important.
Right, okay.
Well, are you talking about any other fire?
Any other driver, maybe it should be a paid driver. I think, I, I think there are members of the volunteer side that have this course. Right, so as a volunteer, so maybe we should have another paid driver go. Right.
Okay, did we already get a motion?
I got a motion.
And amended it to include any other paid driver.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, item D, filtration telemetry, VFDs and sludge hauling. That sounds like a good one, four sixteen, twenty-four, Plattsburg.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, and item E is fire officer two, New York State Fire Class nine twenty-one, looks going through twenty-eight, twenty-four. Sarnac Lake, New York.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us down to F, which is Can-Am hockey banners, summer twenty, or twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and anything else to come from Anita?
No, that's all.
Okay, very good. And Treasury, warrant affidavit number fifteen. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
I have one question. I know if they were gonna look at the, um, the cell phones.
Okay.
Then maybe it's just a move up.
They were looking at the cellphone, why?
I think, I think to the contract.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and I'm guessing that's it from Treasury.
Yes.
Yeah.
Otherwise. Nope, that's good.
Is there anything to come under new business?
Um, yes, uh, I'd like to bring up a salary adjustment, adjustment to Justin Roy. Um, as we know, when the fire department renegotiated their contract, they took away, they managed to disperse the residency fee amongst their salary. But unfortunately affected Justin as a total wash. There's a residency bonus that they got, it was fifteen hundred dollars. Justin also, you had to live in the town of North Elba. So when, when they took it away, it also went away from Justin. Um, I spoke to Mindy about this and it's in the budget, um, we just have to reallocate it. Uh, but Mindy did want board approval. So I would like to ask for a motion to make a salary adjustment to Justin Roy.
Is this a salary adjustment or a one-time?
It's a salary adjustment. Because this, this payout, this fifteen hundred dollar residency fee was an annual fee. So what Mindy's going to do is divide it among the fifty-two paycheck or twenty-six paychecks. And come out with a, an amount that'll be adjusted in his, his paycheck. So, um, I'd like to make that motion to have a salary adjustment. Of fifteen.
We need a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, um, any questions? Okay, all in favor?
I.
I'm sorry.
I, that's fine. Yeah, no, I was just wondering, do we need, do we need an adjustment, or is it just part of what's already actually there?
No, we needed an adjustment, yes. Right, oh.
Okay, I, I think I talked over, but uh, did we get it all in favor?
We did, we did, sorry.
Very good, that's okay. Um, anything else under new business?
Um, can I, I've sent emails out this weekend, um, just giving you an update on those two two items that the town took the lead on, a press relea-, the letters did go out regarding the sidewalk on West Valley. Um, there is a press release going out today or tomorrow regarding that meeting at Lisa G's, just so you know. If you've got any more questions, you can certainly feel free to ask me.
Cause most of that's in the town.
Not the easy parts in the town.
Yeah, um, and, and what did we have, um, Art and I had a conversation. What we have to do is have public input because these types of loans need private funding as a, a matching. We can determine how much the match is, but we need buy-in from the businesses that it can affect. So, there are.
Also, it's not a loan, it's, it's also not a loan, it's a grant.
Correct, I always, I misspoke, it's a loan, grant, it's a grant.
Are they thinking, yeah, I guess they're not.
They're not thinking.
Cause obviously you would have to start it on the where the new development is on the left side, but then.
No.
No?
That, this is, this joint meeting is for the community to come together to say, this is where we need improvements. We don't know where the majority of the people might say, so.
They might say, I know.
They, they could, who knows?
It's very scary because the J ones that are coming here at night are walking around in black clothes.
With traffic.
Right, and so you don't even see them, and they don't see you. You know, so it's a very, very, I don't know how we educate them, but they need some reflective clothing. But it's very, very scary.
Well, there's a sidewalk on the Sarnac Avenue, and people walk on the opposite side.
Oh, I know, that's what I mean, they just don't. I just more worried about them.
Okay, is there anything else under new business?
No, I'm done.
I don't know whether this is new business or old business, but, um, I just want to, and I think the board's aware of this, but I just want to bring up to speed on on where we are, and this is the, um, NYSERTA project that is being handled by Utilida Data, and it's a firm that's got a, as you know, it's got a NYSERTA grant. And they're proposing to put up, put meters on, uh, six sections of, uh, the electric department area, Averyville, the Mobile Home Park, Station Street, Olympic Center, Northwood School, and Van Hovenburg. And, and the project will start this summer. But what it is, is going to provide for the, uh, electric department an analysis of the load and peak power and quality in, in those six areas. So basically, it's monitoring those areas, it's no cost to the village. Apparently, they've already contracted with Little Big Horn to do the installation. I'm still waiting for, um, a license agreement that, uh, we're going to get. Uh, but I just wanted to remind everybody, I think you all knew about this, but that's going to be coming down the pike.
I don't remember when they came in, yeah, in, we would, because they're going down Station Street, and when you go up above where we are in Trillium and that, in, in Blue Bay Ridge, is part of that spout, or whatever you want to call it. It goes off with that.
And I think the important part of it too, it doesn't have any effect on the current meters, it's just an extra device that's added to our current meters to give us a lot more data.
Right.
And it's not gonna cause anything, is what the big thing is.
Yep, and, and it's not, it's a temporary. Piece, so it can come off, and it's, yeah, so I think that it's, um, it doesn't tie us to anything in the future, which is great. But it'll be really, it'll be, I think, really helpful and interesting, uh, for, for us and for them. It's a good thing to be.
Great. Is there anything else under new business?
Um, just to say, I, I sent around an email on, um, the results from the survey from a secret that they're doing as part of the comprehensive plan refresh, and, you know, I won't, I won't go into what they said at all, um, and those are just preliminary results, but the good news is that I think the response rate was pretty high, there's a lot of community engagement. Um, and so I'm looking forward to the next round of feedback coming.
Great progress. Anything else, this might be a record for new business.
Uh, just, um, Mike Orteselli's retirement party is Thursday at nine fifteen, if anybody wants to go.
In the morning?
In the morning, yes, not at night.
And is he officially done, or is that? I know he's retired, but he's.
That's his last day.
That's his last day.
But, and he is officially retired, he's not, like, he's not carrying any time, he's done.
Didn't Darcy take over January one anyway?
No.
I thought that was supposed to happen.
I don't think they made the appointment.
They haven't. I think they're gonna wait till the next board meeting. Now I'm done.
Okay, anybody else for new business? Okay, let's go into old business, although I think we've mixed that up a little bit, anyone have anything old business they want to bring up?
Nope.
Okay, um, nothing under mayor items, except I just got a call from Lisa Carter today, and apparently they were needing someone to do a welcome speech for the group that's coming in, not this weekend, but the next. And I won't be there, I don't know if any of you have any interest, but if you do, just give her a call.
Is it the Norams, or is it?
I think it's the Norams. But that's all I've got, any commissioner reports?
Uh, nothing.
I just remind everyone, next Tuesday is the LPBA social.
Thank you.
At the boat, starting at five thirty. Usually goes till seven thirty or eight. I haven't heard the confirmation whether Adams DeSantis is gonna be able to make it or not, but, uh, we're hoping he does, to give us an update on what he's been working on.
Very good, sorry I missed that one. Okay, um, anything else from commissioners? Okay, um, uh, is that you, Jim, any questions for the board?
Yeah, I got a couple, um, I noticed that we now have, if you have meetings outside that they could be attended, uh, like where you're at in Florida, actually, I was actually contemplating going down there for bike week. I had some friends who might be down there, do we reach out to you all, and, and how do we set that up if we're down there, whether to sit in orbit? You're not doing.
Just let me, just, just let me know whenever you're here.
I don't, I don't wanna go into your living room, so I don't think.
He's invited us.
Right, well, but that's, that's all right, so I always wondered how that'll, so. All right.
No, just give me a call.
Okay. Um, Jackie, I got, this is something that some of the, uh, some people were working on, some ADA compliance with the website and the, uh.
Yep.
And.
All of, um, so Zoom is up and running, and the first night that, uh, it was up and running, I attended remotely so that I could use, and it, it worked really, really well. Um, it kept up with timing and it, it translated everything perfectly.
Great.
Um, all of the forms have been converted and we're just uploading them now, so we're pretty much even, Steven, and we're still working on, um, the adj-, the tax adjustments, because we obviously want the town and the school to engage in the same thing.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so it sounds like you're, you're nearly there.
Nearly there, we're ninety-nine point two percent there. No, no problem.
The other thing is on the website, you were working on that, you had a lot to do there.
Yes, and that, um, that's been updated, everything is updated. We just have to migrate it to the platform, which will take seconds.
Okay, um, I got a question, why didn't, ADA's been around for a long time, especially with ADA with, uh, with, uh, websites and things like that, why didn't we engage recently with a provider that didn't?
Go-to meetings?
No, not go-to meetings, but provide us with a website that was, that's, uh, was ADA accommodations.
You, you.
I'm talking the website now.
The website, so they, we went to them because they were ADA compliant. Revised, we chose Revised because.
That is what was presented to them.
There was another company and Revised came up with the bigger platform, but there were certain things that they were not going to do for us, or they could, but it was going to cost more money. So where we were, where we fell down was the assumption that they were going to do this. And that's why we had to convert all of the documents and, and upload them.
Okay.
So we did it to save money. We didn't know it was going to be as time-consuming as it was, but I think we, we saved a lot of money.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, well, we, well, if we did it that way to save money, to do, do the upload, that's great, but we gotta be very, very careful when we look at ADA law and saving money, there's no.
I know, and as we move forward and we're dealing with many departments, we had to spread the word, I mean, we were just the village. We had to tell the town, we had to tell all the committees, if you're gonna do anything, it's gotta be ADA compliant.
Yeah, I spoke to the town, and, yeah, they were, they told me that they were working robustly like they were. That's great, that's really good news, I appreciate that. Um, I got a few things here, the, I brought up a while ago about the parking, the accessible parking signs that were in the upper lot at MDT. Um, I noticed that they've now been removed, so those were non-compliant spots up there and taking it, because we had the hill and the stairs, and now they're removed, so clearly it was not compliant.
So now it wasn't that, it was, we moved them to the bottom lot. Because we didn't have to, because they were up there, that was fine, but we thought that we would give them the bottom lot, because it would be more compliant.
Well, it's, yeah, well, it's not accessible up on the upper portion of it.
Right, but.
I mean, if somebody wants to run down that, that hill in a wheelchair.
Yeah, if you go over to E-Town.
Art, he's volunteering for that.
If you go look at how they had to go up and all that, it's.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's that far away from that building, if it was, so.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and this, we have, uh, we have different things here, we had ample space, but it's, so that's okay, it's done, it's, it's remedy. The thing I want to talk about with, with those spaces down there. Um, we noticed that, that the, uh, the, the way the law reads, do we know how clear the law is on how we have to be, they have to be the nearest locations, you can't put them like up against the wall. Not so bad there, but it's still not compliant, but if we go to the clock tower, they're all the way back in the corner. And we find that that's a problem there because of the fact that the snow gets pushed there, and then people park there, you can't get a van in there, so we have to relook that and take a look at that, and, uh, I can give you comments on that if you want, documentation, uh, my opinions are, if you, if you are interested in my.
Sure, I'll bring it up with Brad, um, to take a look at those spaces at the clock line.
Okay.
Um, are there van lot, are there vans?
Well, do we know how, does everybody know how ADA parking works, and what we need for village, and what your requirements are, your minimum one van space, is your, is your?
We do, that, we've got that from the engineer, and we've, we've, we've got that at the municipal lot, we may not. So, I, I'll work that through with Brad.
So it might be that we just do things a little bit different down, maybe those parking spots are moved to the, to the front along where the sidewalk is. Um, and then you can make one, I, I, do you have over twelve there, I, I didn't count them.
No.
You don't have over twelve, you only require for one, I believe that, I think it's twelve. But take a look at that, and look at your, look at your, uh, look at your stock.
Is it just about twelve?
You need fifteen feet for the van.
Yeah. Last call, when we pass the laws for tax relief for first responders and the, uh, and the seniors.
Right.
There's also two other legs in that law, one being veterans and the other being disabled or limited incomes. Where we have that.
That, I'm working on that, so.
Perfect.
Um, that will come into effect until our new tack, our new fiscal year.
Yeah.
But, um, I'm working with, uh, Deb upstairs in the assessor's office, so it's in process. Um, we'd like to get the town and the school on board as well.
Yeah, well, you're gonna work, I, I reached out to the town already, and I was gonna reach out to them.
I, I just mentioned it, and I'm sure the, you know, yes.
I wanted, I wanted to get the villagers' position on it, and then go from there, then I. I noticed that there's other towns around there doing what you all did last year, and they should be doing more, they should be doing more. And it's, the problem is that it's all within the same law. And veterans, unless you're disabled that, then, then there could be some issues, but we're excluding disabled with limited income.
Right.
And that is, uh, that's a, that's a keg that I might wait to blow up if you don't, if you don't make progress.
So what the assessor's office does is goes to see how it, monetarily it affects the tax roll, not that that has any bearing, but it's something we have to be cognizant of. So, that's what we're waiting on now.
Yeah, yeah, they need to make adjustments to.
Right.
You don't, you don't have an arbitrary level to, to, if, if there is, let, let's say, half of the town or half of the village qualified for that, I'm just using it as an arbitrary.
Okay.
What's your measure not to go through with that, do you know that or not?
I don't know, but Deb would know, at the assessor's office.
So. We're working on that, great, good stuff, Jackie, appreciate that. We found, we stumbled into an issue, again, this goes into ADA, um, with, there's no policy in place for, uh, the parking permit, so the parking permit system, there's nothing in place of, well, Wendy talked to you. And, and there was, there was no, there was nothing in place other than, well, you can find a more vehicle park, but there's no policy in place for those who have temporary parking permits in ADA spaces or accessible spaces. When we went through and we were looking for a space for to park, the only place that we could find is down at the the beach house here, there's one sign. Eight, ADA sign down there, and oddly enough, when I was doing my walk the other day, it was still covered with snow, half of that's covered with snow, so that doesn't serve us well, but that's permit parking down there. Um, the permit, and I understand parking is a struggle. But the way we have different spaces all over town, or all over the village.
Right, for the permits, right.
I think, it's my opinion, what needs to happen, when that is presented to people and they need a parking permit, that there is something, that there's a policy in place that states that you can park in these specific locations, let's say be at the main, main lot here, or down at the clock tower, and, and BT lot, wherever you can fit in with your disabled, either placard or plate, and your parking permit. There should be something there, the unfortunate thing that happened, we didn't have a policy in place, so Chuck's team wasn't aware of that. Wendy wound up getting a parking ticket that we had to go to, um, because we followed what she was given, and she wound up getting a parking ticket for parking in the, in the lot, with her, with her plate and her, and her temporary.
At the, at the next workshop, we're going to revisit the parking permit situation, and we will bring that up to see how we can solve that.
And I think the easiest way to do that is just to have that policy, have everybody aware of it, have the officers aware of it, and then when people are are coming in for their permits, that's just another attachment that goes along with that, so that way you're not with ADA, you gotta be careful that you're not making people do extra steps.
Correct.
That becomes a problem, they have to do the extra steps. Okay. So that's just status of that. We've had the, Miss Eschling's been ADA coordinator for years, spoke to you the other day about doing our self-evaluation, and it gets into things to find out where we're not compliant within the village. Typically, when someone's appointed to that, the way that works is that you have that um, that self eval done within a year, um, and that will come, you know, today, in your period. Um, from what I'm understanding, that you've been advised that you don't need to do this self-evaluation, or the, the village doesn't need to do that, you told me that.
That's what I've heard, we have another attorney following up and looking into that too, but yes. We, we follow ADA anytime anything is built or set up, so we believe we are compliant.
I, given enough information, I spoke to this board on August twenty-first, lining all that out, what was required um, for that, as you know, I spend a lot of time on ADA because of my, my, what I do for a living. Constantly engaged with spaces and walkways and all of that type of stuff, so I have a pretty good grasp on what to put in for ADA. So I think you need to relook at that, and I think that you should make sure that you're doing these things um, proactively to make sure that we're not getting ourselves into a bind. It's the law, so, and I've given you all enough from ADA law, so it's there, so do some more research on it, if, if not. Some problems if you don't have self-evaluation and transition plans. And you know, do you know why we have this, I guess, could I throw that question out there? Does everybody know why we would do such a thing?
Self-evaluation?
Self-evaluation and the transition plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's to identify gaps and opportunities, and then, and then have a, I mean, it's like any you know, it's like any, any reason why in any city, you would do either of those things, and then it, that, to, you know, to make a plan or identify what's there.
You know, so we look across the street here, there's, we have a crosswalk, right, crosswalks, you need to be ADA compliant. There's a sewer break, we're not gonna rip up all the sewer, maybe we could have repositioned things before, but maybe there's an opportunity where we can pick up a grant and say, hey, and this isn't just this one, they're all over the village. Um, maybe we can pick up a grant where we have different drainage slots on the top of those, and somebody can provide that for us, or either a federal grant or a, uh, some type of ADA donor grant that's out there, so there's opportunities for that, but if we don't do the self-evaluation and then put in this plan, so we say, hey, we're going up, we need ten new grids because, you know, they're just worn out, well, maybe we can replace it with something that's different. So, and again, I'm trying to be helpful here.
No, yeah.
Not trying to, you know, you guys sometimes think that I'm going to. I wanna just touch on this, just on this grid curves again. The opinion of the village that we're not gonna do anything about this over two hundred tires for damage, you're not gonna reach out, you're not gonna go back to Kabricky and get the fourteen thousand dollars back, and at least get our money back or something, I, I gave you the, uh, gave you the language on that, and the language is clear that it's for that, the, the engineering bulletin that came out in two thousand sixteen was when you get an engineering bulletin like that, they give you guidance, and they gave us guidance within a variation of specification of what the grind should be. That wasn't valid, clearly, because we wound up with.
It was a response to that, and we offered it to you, and you said you didn't want it because it came after the fact. We offered you a response to that all.
No, I'm asking the village, I'm not asking for your engineer's response, I'm asking for the village board's response. How do you justify?
I think I can speak to that, Jim, is that the curbs that were in there were compliant with New York State specs, they were inspected by the New York State inspectors that were on the job. And, uh, what we did was above and beyond the call, just to make sure our shopping district was okay.
After the fact, after you round them, I guess, so.
And when you say two hundred tires were popped, you're, you're basing that off of what?
Based upon what you and Jackie told me in a meeting?
No, that's not true, uh, none of us have got those numbers, we have got three people that have come to us, and that's the only ones that we're aware of.
Well, y- you all said that Strax did two hundred of them, you all said.
Well, that's what, that's what they've said, but that, we don't have any confirmation on that.
Well, I talked to Jay Strack, and he agreed with that, so.
Okay, but.
I mean, I'm not the one, I, I don't have a damaged tire, but I just think that it's a pretty poor response, and I think that you should be going after either your engine, and let me tell you something about state inspections, state inspections, they give you the guidance, it's up to you to it's up to you to configure your work, not to damage things, so if they specifically say there that it's for tire damage, so it's up to you. It's up to you all on how you wanna handle it, but I think that, you know, a lot of people. Jay said that, yeah, he did replace two hundred tires, you all sat in a meeting on the twenty-ninth of August. Last year and said, Jackie and you both said that Strax, you know, where at Central Block Garage did two hundred tires, so. There is a validation of that, Art, you can't come back and tell me.
I do not know that, all I know is that's what Strax have said, I also don't know how many tires they replace in a given winter. I don't know how many extras there are, what we can go on is based on the people that have contacted the village, and there were three of them, and they were all handled. And as far as the inspection goes, you, you seem to have a different idea of it, I mean, we have curbs that were brought in by, uh, uh. By Ivan, they complied with the New York State specs, they were inspected by our New York State inspector that was on site. Um, there's not much more we can do about it.
That's a position, but I, I think that's a faulty position, that's faulty, faulty way to look at it. Um, especially when now you're coming back and saying that you don't have any gravitation when you were the one, you all were the ones that told me the two hundred tires.
I don't believe so, you, you, you've got most things, or you can go back and look at the recordings, but no, none of us, we, we've heard the Strax say that, but like I said. We really don't know how many of those were caused by anything, how many are unusual.
Don't know, don't know, that's something that maybe people that had damage will, will come back and, I mean. It's, if fifty people come back and say, yeah, my tires were damaged, and here's the receipt, and here's what had happened, then what's the position gonna be at that point?
That's a good question.
How were they driving parking?
Right, but did they? Down in the entry, people are up on the curb, people are like this, did they back in right, that slammed into the curb, I'm just saying. We didn't see how to park.
Yeah, well, if a granite curb is done correctly, it won't pop a tire, that's what I'm saying, but we're getting into semantics here. I can tell you that with both with the inspection process, they give you a standard, and they're looking for different things, they're not looking for the things. Uh, so much, they're looking for the size, dimension, and the, and the quality of the granite that goes in there, that's what they're looking for. Um, they put these engineering bulletins out, uh, as guidance for you, so this engineering bulletin gives you a guidance of between. An eighth, or an eighth of an inch, and three eighths of an inch, and I can tell you, if you put a three eighths of an inch champer. On a granite curb, that's about equal to what we would have in our home, and you could drive any type of tire up on that, so. It, what, what should have been done, it should have been locked up, it should have been inspected, it should have been looked at by your engineer, by your contractor, that's the way that stuff is typically done. To make sure that it is working, so, and the big problem is, is that. I think that we paid fourteen thousand dollars for them to come back and do something that they should have given you in the, in, correct in the first place. All right, so that's it. I just wanna address this other thing, I, I, I FOIA requested, looking for certified letters, so I am receiving certified letters from. From the village to Ms. Bledsoe, because I was told on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. By Ms. Bliss that she sent two certified letters to us, when we claimed that we never received them, and then I asked her for the receipts that night. And she went on and didn't discuss the receipts, I FOIA requested return receipts for certified. Legal notification is the way she put it that night, that we were notified, and none of these receipts exist.
So, and I subsequently, when I spoke off the cuff that night, um, what, in December. I did say that I had sent them certified mail return receipt requested, I subsequently let everybody know. That I had not, in fact, sent them that way, they were sent regular mail to the Lake Bussett address, and to, is it Virginia?
Well, I got to Virginia.
Address, so that was a misstatement on my part, which I have admitted to previously.
Not to me, though, so I thank you, so, we, we, when the FOIA request came through, I would have gladly taken it.
And I, and I was looking again, and I will, we will answer that foil, but.
Well, foil has been answered, that it doesn't exist, and now that you've said this.
And I, and I know that you think that I never mailed them, and I, I do take offense at that, because that's not the way I operate, and they were absolutely mailed.
But we didn't receive them.
And I know that, and I, I'm also aware that you've not received other mail that the village has sent, and, and I don't know what the problem is. But, uh, that, that is not the way I operate, and I would never, I'll, I'll sign that affidavit that those were posted in the US Postal Service.
Well, it's different, um, again, you could have clarified that to me in an email or a phone call, that would have been greatly appreciated, you might have clarified it to this group, but not to me.
I'm sorry.
I accept your apology, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, that's all I have, you all have a good day, thanks.
Thank you.
Happy spring.
Thank you for all your hard work, appreciate that.
Okay, I don't believe there's anyone else online, is there?
No.
Not even any press.
Down there, Art, I wanna see who's warmer, us or you?
Uh, right now it's sixty-seven, and we're lower seventies today. Yes, but your ground is frozen, you can't play golf.
Hey, the process coming out, let me just tell you.
Sar- Sar- Saratoga opened today, or it's opening tomorrow.
Nice. Okay, is there anything else to come before the board?
Nope.
Making motion.
Look for a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.